Is seven thirty. This is the regular meeting for June twenty-third. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Mier.
Here.
Councilor Rohrbach. Councilman Soltes.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
And Mayor Grabstein.
I am here, thank you. Can I please get a motion to excuse Councilor Rohrbach? She did give notice.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilor Rohrbach.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support. Your Honor, I'm sorry. Support.
Okay, all right. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilor Wright. I invite you to join if you would like, or stand if you would like.
In a time often marked by division, let us come together in unity, not just in words, but in the actions we take, on behalf of our families, our neighbors, and our city. May we rise above personal differences to represent every voice within this community. And as we serve our city, may we also honor the greater responsibility we share to our nation. May the pride of our nation be rooted in its inclusivity, where every identity is valued and a person's worth is never defined by their status, but by their humanity and their contribution. Let tonight's work be more than routine. Let it be a small token of gratitude to those who sacrificed for this union. May we stand united, remembering always our shared promise to be indivisible with liberty and justice.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I please get a motion to approve Annette Voucher as our acting city clerk for the evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. First up, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go to public hearings. This is the MERS-defined contribution plan withdrawal and transfer agreement.
This public hearing is scheduled to receive public comments on the proposed municipal employees retirement system of Michigan, defined contribution, withdrawal, and transfer agreement. As required by MERS Retirement Board Termination Policy and Procedure, the process to withdraw from this defined contribution plan requires public notice at two consecutively, excuse me, two consecutive regularly scheduled meetings of the city council. The first public hearing was held on June ninth, 2025, and the second is planned for today's meeting. The resolution to terminate participation in the MERS 401A Defined Contribution Plan has been drafted, which, if approved, will permit the city to execute the MERS Withdraw and Transfer Agreement. Following the public hearing, staff recommends that the city council approve the MERS Resolution to Terminate and MERS Withdraw and Transfer Agreement. And Dan Stewart from Mission Square is here this evening to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to open this meeting to the public to specifically talk about this. We will open the meeting to the public to talk about anything, but right now, if anyone wishes to talk specifically about the MERS-defined contribution plan, I invite you to come to the podium. All right. Seeing no one wishing to speak, can I, I'm going to close public comment and ask for a motion from council to approve.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the MERS Resolution to Terminate and the MERS Withdraw and Transfer Agreement.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just so we don't breeze past this, because I know the public's probably like, there's a lot of acronyms and I don't know what's going on. Could staff or our representative come on up and give like the two-minute overview of why this makes sense for us to do before we vote on it?
Yes, please.
You could rock, paper, scissors.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here on behalf of Mission Square Retirement. So we are currently the record keeper for the city's 457 B Deferred Compensation Plan. With part of this agreement, we're going to be bringing everything under one roof to have better services for city employees. So what that means is, in partnership with the Bryce Group, you're going to have an open architecture investment lineup, more choices, more options, more oversight, in addition to a reduced cost, and also improve services by having streamlined education. So both Mission Square and the Bryce Group are available to meet with city employees, to discuss the retirement plan, what makes sense for them, are they saving enough, provide education. And really, we're going to be able to bring that under one roof by having both plans of Mission Square and more comprehensive pricing.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, comments from council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
One question. Okay, so the current retirees, how does that affect them? Are they, is their administrator for their plans changing then?
Correct. So everything will be mapped over into like investments. So for example, if they're in a specific stock fund at MERS, that will come over to a similar stock fund at Mission Square. They will also, you know, have the reduced fee structure, so that will be implemented in their new plan with Mission Square. The other thing with any retirees or separated employees, they have the right to leave the plan and rule that out elsewhere if they desire to. But they will enjoy the same benefits as every other employee by coming over to Mission Square, and they won't be affected by having, you know, their investment strategy changed. It's mapped over to a like investment. So for example, they're not going to go from an aggressive portfolio to a conservative portfolio or vice versa. It gets mapped over into a like investment.
Okay. And then a follow-up is, how long have you guys, like, been in operation as far as, it's, you guys have a well-established.
Oh, yeah.
You know, company that manages.
Correct. We've been in business since nineteen seventy-three.
Okay.
So quite a long time. I think we've been the record keeper for the city since the early two thousands on the 457 side. So this will bring the 401A also under one roof of Mission Square.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For your time. All right, any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And we are going to open the meeting to the public. Before we do, I just want to let everybody know, we are having technical difficulties, so this is being recorded, but right now, unless it's been fixed, it's not being live streamed on Facebook for, but anyone can watch this later. So apologies to anyone who was watching this later that it was not being streamed live. With that, I'm going to open up public comment. I welcome anyone who would like to come to the podium. Please address your comments to me, give your name, address, and affiliation with the city. Keep it to three minutes. And with that, floor is open.
Good evening, everyone. I am Madison Heights resident of forty years. My question for this council and mayor is item number one. Do Madison Heights elected officials represent all of the people in the city, or just a small sect of it? By allowing the alternate flag passage, you have opened the floodgates. We are now using a public municipal space to be used as a social justice playground. If serving all citizens of Madison Heights, this space should repaint, remain neutral. There should be an American flag and a state flag, nothing else. I see where we have graduated from the pride flag to a trans flag. By trying to appease a small percentage of the city's population, you have managed to alienate people of faith, which includes some of the Jewish faith, the Christian faith, Muslims, who in Hamtramck have removed any alternate flags, and a portion of the gay residents who believe the trans movement is a bridge too far. If the alternate flag ruling is not reversed, I would like a combination Christian-Jewish flag to be raised to acknowledge our country's history, which is rooted in Judeo-Christian principles and values. I highly recommend a book by revered child psychiatrist Dr. Miriam Grossman. She shares the heartbreaking stories of the hundreds of patients she has seen who have been coerced into having gender reassignment surgeries. From the multiple infections these children suffered, to even their inability to use the restroom properly, it is a sobering depiction of what these children are subjected to under the guise of gender affirmation. So maybe this adds some context to some of what the flag you are flying represents. Item number two. What is the item number seven listed as Sanctuary City Inquiry all about on the Human Relations and Equity Committee meeting agenda of June the twelfth, 2025? I surely hope Madison Heights is not entertaining bringing the Sanctuary City classification to our city, are they? Madison Heights could risk losing both state revenue sharing and federal dollars by classifying itself as such. I know these are some heavy topics, but they need to be addressed. Thank you. I highly recommend this book. It's phenomenal.
I'm sorry, Ms. Garrison, Ms. Garrison, can, sorry, can you just give them to me and I will hand them out, please? I will, I will make sure they get handed out. Oh, yeah. Perfect, thank you. Were you still?
I still cast my.
No, you're not supposed to. Yeah.
I highly recommend it. It's a brilliant.
Okay. Are you, sorry, are you, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, I want to make sure you have your time.
Thank you so much for hearing me.
Yes, of course, thank you. And I will pass these out. Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Good evening, council. My name's Doug McLean, twenty-seven, four thirty-two Park Court, Madison Heights. I also am concerned about any other flag flying in city Madison Heights other than state of Michigan and United States flag. I have concerns about the construction that just started today for the beautification south end of Eleven Mile Road. My concern is, is the police department, fire department sign off on this? Are they involved in any of the studies for the proposal? Also, I'm concerned that emergency vehicles are not going to make it through that intersection or the roadway flow of traffic during and after construction. Also concerned about cut-through traffic coming off of John R. Eleven Mile Road to get away from that during and after construction. Also concerned about the Sanctuary Cities program. I don't know if that's been initiated, but I don't think that should happen here in Madison Heights either. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close, open to the public, and we're going to move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. There's three items on here. The first is the St. Jude Iraq Resolution for Charitable Gaming License. The next is from the Director of Public Services, the SACPA Mutual Aid Authority Agreement. And then the last is the council meeting minutes from the regular meeting on June ninth. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Your Honor. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
A few motions have been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I'm going to vote yes, but I was wondering if the representative from the charity St. Jude Iraq would like to say a few words about their cause and their charity?
If he would like, take a moment.
Good evening. My name is Anne Esmar. My name is Anne Esmar, and I live in Washington, Tomschow. But our office is in Madison Heights, and we're asking for, we're having a gala and on August ninth, and we want to do some raffles. And in order for us to do a raffle, we have to have a license from Madison Heights. The proceeds for all, whatever we're going to collect and do, one hundred percent goes to orphans and widows that are in Iraq. But we also have other people that we help here, like the homeless program in PBJ, Peanut Butter and Jelly, that's out of Plymouth, where we help the homeless. And so we collect canned goods from that, from the money. We do code drives in the winter. We do Thanksgiving in the, you know, during Thanksgiving time. So we have a variety, but the main thing is, when we collect that money, one hundred percent, we're all volunteers, goes to the widows and the orphans and the less fortunate in here. Is there anything else I can, any more questions?
I think that was it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion from council? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Congratulations, you've been approved. All right. Next up, we have reports. We have from the finance, finance director amendments to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget and carryforwards to amend the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
The state of Michigan's budget law requires that any budget amendments be approved by the city council. The budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budgets are in compliance with state law. The most significant amendments are the fiscal year twenty-six carryforwards for projects that are budgeted in fiscal, fiscal year twenty-five, but will be expended or completed in the upcoming fiscal year. These improvements include the phone system upgrade, phase funding for the fire department quint, trash cart rollout, and the ball field lighting grant project. Staff recommends that council approve the budget amendments and carryforwards to the fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six budgets and appropriate the necessary funds.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the updated budget amendments and carryforwards for the fiscal year twenty-two five and twenty-two six.
All right. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support is read.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then from the Director of Public Services, Tree Grant and Inventory Services.
Earlier this year, the city manager, with assistance from staff, submitted a grant for a federally funded tree planting and inventory program through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, the DNR. As part of the grant application process, the city solicited several firms to provide proposals for the tree inventory services. Davy's Davy Resource Group provided the most comprehensive and cost-effective proposal and has extensive experience performing the scope of work for this particular grant. On Monday, June ninth, the city was informed that our grant proposal was selected, and Madison Heights was awarded the full grant funding in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends that council consider two motions. Motion number one, to authorize the city manager to sign the grant agreement for the MDNR Urban and Community Forestry Inflation Reduction Act grant in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And motion number two, to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Davy Resource Group, as has been deemed to be in the best interest of the city for an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the grant agreement for the MDNR Urban and Community Forestry Inflation Reduction Act grant in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Additionally, to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement with Davy Resource Group, as has been deemed to be in the best interest of the city for the amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Technically, they should be two motions, two separate motions, because I was, the council may want to vote differently on each motion. I doubt it, but for clarity's sake, it should be separated.
All right.
Does the maker of the motion agree?
I agree.
Support.
Yeah, I make two, I support both motions, yes.
So the, so the first motion is to authorize the city manager to sign the grant agreement for the MDNR Urban and Community Forestry Inflation Reduction Act grant in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
All right. Mr. Wright, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I, we, go ahead. I just wanted to make a comment.
Support, it's okay?
Yes, support.
Okay. And is there any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just fantastic win-win. We get, you know, a grant and we get to get some resources, so for improving the environment. Yay.
All right. Any other comments?
Your Honor, do we know what exactly falls, I know, I'm reading this here, it talks about the tree inventory service. Will that provide any, any additional funds for like DPW to manage tree, the tree canopies that we have? Or is that just for, says here about information for, you know, maybe planting more trees or, you know, maintaining the, you know, just information to citizens that are needing information on, you know, keeping their tree maintenance going? Do we know anything about that at all?
Sean, do you want to address that? We'll have our DPS director answer that.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the tree inventory portion of the grant is to basically do just a full city tree inventory on all public right-of-way grounds and city grounds, including an assessment portion. So this is the company actually going out tree by tree, telling us where our trees are, getting us GIS plots on them, then letting them know, letting us know if they're in fair condition, poor condition, do they need to come down. We've got something in the neighborhood of ninety-six hundred homes in the city, thirteen parks, and just so many other public right-of-way areas that we can't possibly look at every one of these trees. So while we do the best job we can, it's entirely possible there are some trees that look just fine, but then when they get up there, it's like, oh, this really does need to come down yesterday. So it's reducing liability for the city, giving us a lot of tools to manage the tree canopy better moving forward. Then we're also, as part of the tree planting program, part of it, we're able to basically eliminate the waitlist for the right-of-way tree planting program with a hundred and fifty trees. As part of that, the people on the waitlist are going to have to watch several informational videos about tree care and maintenance, tree planting, basically just all things tree, and the grant's covering all of this. So we end up with more trees, a better maintained tree canopy, a better idea of what we have in the city, and education about trees.
All right, that sounds great. Yeah, you know, my concern is that, you know, DT and with the storms, stuff like that, and power outage that we had, I think this is going to have a great effect on that, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns? So I do have one question. I am on that waitlist. So does that mean I'll get a tree this year?
Absolutely.
All right, okay. All right, thank you. If there's, thank you, Mr. Valentine.
You're welcome.
If there's no other questions or discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then for the second motion, if I can get a second motion, please.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement with Dave Resource Group, as has been deemed to be in the best interest of the city for an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
A few motions have been made. Seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then finally, we have from a bid awards purchases from the Director of Public Services, the Rosie's Gardenia Parking Lot Replacement.
The fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget included funding for the much-needed replacement of the Rosie's Park Gardenia Parking Lot. The project was bid, and upon tabulation and analysis, it was determined that the budgeted funding was insufficient, and an additional phase of funding was proposed and approved in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This project was rebid in May with asphalt specialist LLC providing the lowest qualified bid. The city's consulting engineering firm, Noah and Fros, performed the appropriate reference checks and due diligence on this company, and has determined they are fully capable of performing the scope of work for the city with similar projects undertaken in the immediate area. Staff concurs with the recommendation of Noah and Fros and respectfully requests that council award the Rosie Parks Gardenia Parking Lot Replacement Project to the lowest qualified bidder, asphalt specialist LLC of Pontiac, for a total project cost of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Funding is budgeted and available in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor. I'd like to make a recommendation of, oh, am I on the right thing? I think I am. I make a recommendation of Noah and Fros and respectfully request city council award the Rosie's Park Gardenia Parking Lot Replacement Project to the lowest qualified bidder, asphalt specialist LLC of Pontiac, for a total project cost of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars to be used from the twenty-two five, twenty-six fiscal year budget.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
All right. A few motions has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And with that, I invite closing comments, starting with Councilman Mier.
Thank you, Your Honor. Stay cool. This heat wave is, is pretty rough, so stay cool out there. Reminder that our library, I believe, is, is serving as a cooling station. If you need that, please, festival on the park is Sunday. Please stay staple for the holidays and come join us at the festival. Have a great holiday season. And just a reminder that because of the heat wave, movie night from the library got moved to July. Hopefully, it's not hotter in July than it was in June, but keep an eye out for that coming in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tim Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. Sad that the public didn't get to see this live. It was riveting discussion. But twenty-five minutes is a very easy re-watch for anybody who wants to go and stream it on YouTube. I wanted to point out, as we were talking about the, the tree canopy, it kind of, I don't know, brought me back. It's been nearly ten years since we passed the very first tree replacement policy in the city of Madison Heights. And the amount that this city has been transformed in that area in that amount of time is pretty important. And so it's a nice reminder that policy matters. It's about creation. It's about coming up with real ways to solve problems. We had a limited budget back then. Councilman Soltes can probably chime in as well, but we had limited budget savings that we dedicated to ensuring that every tree that was taken down in a construction project was replaced. And then we moved on to adding trees in parks, and then we moved on to adding trees in residential neighborhoods that were hit hard by construction projects previous to that policy. And so I, I just think that that's a perfect example of the way that this council operates the best and the way that our staff operates the best. It was a small issue. It doesn't impact you until you don't have a tree out front of your house or next door, or next door to that. Then you notice. And so I, I think just the, the fact that this was passed tonight, it's a nice opportunity to look back at how far we've come. And so maybe, and this doesn't have to be an urgent thing, but maybe it'd be a good idea for us to put something out on social media now that this is passed about all the steps that we've taken to be able to improve that tree canopy since 2016. It's been pretty dang impressive, and I think nearly every member of council during that time has had something impactfully important to be able to do with improving that tree canopy. So, thank you on that. I also want to give a shout out. There are still room for, for bands at Trail Tunes, so reach out, visit the Arts Board page. You can apply to be a part of it. The Trail Tunes Planning Committee is going to be selecting our bands in, I think, about a week. So if you, if you want to play at Trail Tunes, make sure, make sure you fill out that link pretty quick. And as Councilman Mier said, stay cool. Visit the library, stay cool there. If your AC is acting up, if it's taking forever for your house to cool down, I'm sure you could find something really fun to do in the maker's space at the library. So go check that out. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yes, I would just like to start by thanking both the Arts Board and the HRC for hosting the Pride event on Sunday. It was a phenomenal event. It was super hot. It was like beyond super hot. But I just want to give kudos to those two groups for one, collaborating together, and two, for making it happen. You know, I think that the effort for everyone to feel heard and seen is not equal. It is not the same. Everyone does not feel heard and seen, and sometimes it's okay for us to just take a day of breath, to just have a picnic and have fun. So kudos to those guys for getting that done, for having some good food. Also Taco Hub, fantastic food, and so was the hot dog truck, too. And I saw Councilman Pro Tim Bliss having a popsicle with his family out there, so it was a good time. I also wanted to remind everyone that this is still Men's Mental Health Month. And I've been thinking a lot about men's mental health lately, one, because I am a dad, and two, because I know most of us keep things inside. So it's something we're. So it's something we're taught to do. We're taught to like push it down, some of us. I won't say all of us, some of us are taught to push it down, or, you know, for me, I use sarcasm as a defense mechanism. I got pretty good at it, sometimes. But I know sometimes, like, you know, it, we think it's a strength, but it's not. Seeking help requires self-awareness, and if you feel stuck, if you find yourself needing to control things all the time, or you're often in like a state of conflict, where you're like looking for somebody to fight or someone to be against you, it's okay to check in with yourself. That's not a weakness. That's called being human. So talk to someone. That doesn't mean you need to talk to a professional, talk to a friend, but as men, we need to find a way to like let things go and not become obsessive and focus on a person, place, or a thing. We just need to focus on ourselves. So let's normalize growth, let's normalize healing, and happy 4th of July.
Yeah. Mr. Sherman?
Same, Your Honor. Happy 4th to all our residents, and I think our festival is Sunday, June 29th. It's one of the best festivals you will ever attend, and I would strongly recommend that all our residents come out and see a great fireworks show, among other attractions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything from the city manager's office?
Nothing.
All right. Anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Fleming?
I have a few things here. The first one is that between the last meeting and this meeting, I'm a veteran, and, but I also had the privilege to join the local recruiting company that put on the Army's birthday on June, what was it?
13th.
Yeah, June 13th. Sorry, it's been a lot of days since. But, yeah, so the Army's birthday, the 250th birthday of the Army, I'm like, wow, it's been a long time the Army's been around. And it was really nice. He had cake and really, you know, really great pizza that they had from some really remarkable place. And then, but most of all, they had the MRAP, which we have the company Navistar Defense here, and they brought out the MRAP and another vehicle, it's theirs, and we were able to ride inside of it. And I have to say, it was a pretty exciting ride. It's nothing compared to any four-by-four vehicle that I've ever been in that the military had. And also, it was, they had, while we were there, we also sent off some new recruits that were joining the Army. So, you know, I hope they have the best endeavors in their careers going forward. Also, I wanted to say that I'm looking forward to the concerts this summer that are going to be taking part in the band show. I know that there may be some hot days, not as hot as this, hopefully, that we're going to be able to enjoy the summertime and the concerts, and I'm looking forward to those. I also want to say that construction is going on, and I said it at the last meeting, but I'm saying it again, that let's watch out for construction workers in our construction zones on 11 Mile and John R. The workers are out there closest to the edge of the traffic, moving, you know, moving with their construction vehicles, walking around, and it's really important to make sure that we're looking out for their safety all the time while you're driving out throughout the city. And the last thing I want to talk about is the, there was an issue where a resident contacted me a few weeks ago about trees being trimmed. So they thought that their tree, they had called DTE, and they wanted their tree to be trimmed, and DTE did not answer. And I talked to our DPS department, and they went and looked at the tree to make sure it had something to do with DTE, and they've been talks with DTE about it. And I think it's really important, if you're having a problem where the trees that you have are near the power lines and you're, there's a dispute over it, I would like people to call the city, and we can go look at it and see whose responsibility it really is, whether it's the owners or DTE, and then we could start putting some type of pressure on DTE to, you know, to quickly take care of that. I don't want us to be in a situation where we have multiple outages of power in the city, and then, you know, where they're like, well, you know, you know, we didn't have any, you know, any issue where we went and, you know, basically proactively went out and cut trees, and then we had this outage. So I want to try to get ahead of that. So that's for today.
Thank you. Someone told us?
No, that's nothing. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I just want to touch on a few things that some of them already have been mentioned. So DTE is actually going to be in my neighborhood, so I received something from them that they're going to be in my neighborhood, so I'm guessing they're going to be around the city. They do a lot of just regular maintenance trimming. It's not necessarily a DTE truck. They often subcontract out, but they are going to be around, they come around after the storm, they come around just sort of as a regular maintenance. So keep an eye out for that. If you are concerned, you can reach out to DTE directly and just let them know that you have a concern. So thank you, Councilman Fleming, for mentioning that. With respect to the trees, I think this is great. So just before I came onto council, council had come up with this plan to replant every time a tree came out. And I know that that happened with me. We never got a tree because there was nothing in place, and so one of the first things I did when I came onto council was reestablish the Environmental Citizens Committee. It was one of those in the first 100 days. It's something that I did, and we started talking about trees and looking at tree grants and meeting with relief and all these different things. And so now, hearing all these things is great. And I completely concur with Mayor Pro Tem Bliss that we, it would be nice to see, you know, what was it like before, and then what were the different changes that took place, and how many trees have we added? Because I know that in the last five, 10 years, we've added a ton. Happy birthday to the Army. It was great to celebrate with them again. I was there last year for their 249th, I was there this year for their 250th. And one of the really cool things that they did before we got into the MRAP and drove around the city was they cut the cake, and they said their tradition is to have the oldest and the youngest. So the youngest was a 16-year-old and who had joined ROTC or whatever it was, and they were there in their gear. And the oldest was somebody who was in their 70s, who was another vet who was there. And so it was very, it was very cool to see the different ages, because we had everybody in between as well. So I want to thank the Army Recruiting Station for inviting us to that. That was, that was great. And then, as mentioned, we had a couple of other events that went on that I was able to attend with respect to Men's Mental Health Month. You know, the Community Coalition was at the Arts and Pride, and they had the little, I forgot to bring mine, but they had the little wristbands about mental health, and it was just a reminder to everybody that you never know what somebody's going through. Mental health is one of those invisible diseases. You look normal, and you don't know what's actually going on inside. So just keep that in mind. You never know what's going on, and always try and be kind. And then finally, I want to touch on the streetscape. So we had the groundbreaking last week. The police and fire chiefs were there. They are, they were aware that this was happening. There, I don't think there's any kind of major construction that goes on without having a conversation with our chiefs to make sure that they are comfortable with getting their vehicles to where they need to get. And if they didn't know about it, they were at the streets, the groundbreaking, so they found out Friday, but pretty sure they knew about it beforehand. And what was interesting with that is that one of the things I said in my speech was that the DDA was actually created in 1997, when George Suarez was the mayor. A lot of people think that the DDA is a relatively new, a new plan, a new idea, a new group. It's not. It's been around since 1997. And a year later, in 1998, one of the first things that they suggested was, hey, we should do some kind of a streetscape. So for people who are thinking that maybe we're moving a little bit too fast and putting in the streetscape, 1998, it's been, you know, 27 years since this was first talked about. So I'm excited to see what changes are going to take place with that. Unfortunately, over the summer, we're going to have construction. No one likes construction, so please be very aware of everybody who is out, of the construction workers, of people who might be trying to cut corners, you know, with traveling. Just give everybody a bit of grace. It's better to get there a few minutes late than to have some kind of accident. Our next meeting is going to be on July 14th. The time is now 8:09, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Sherman. This is your 50. Thank you. Thank you.